The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen only mode.
You have to, in the, in the post-COVID world, you have to live with these things. This is part of what we do now. Okay, we're going to call a meeting to order. We have two meetings this evening. The first meeting we have is our second budget hearing for, for everyone to hear about our budget plans. And if they have comments, make comments, give their input. So I'd like to welcome everyone to that meeting. It is Thursday, September 21st, 6:30 PM. And could you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, with that, Diane, please let the record show all members of council are present this evening.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And we'll start out this public hearing with me making the announcement that our proposed operating military rate necessary to fund the budget is 9.78% above the rollback rate, military rate of 1.7490. That means same amount of dollars we got last year. That would be the rate that we need more dollars actually to run this year. And we have the same military rate that we are now. I also want to announce the proposed operating military rate is 1.9200 for the general fund. We're going to get an update now from my finance director on where we headed for the first budget hearing. This is for our second budget hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The proposed budget of 87,286,617 is unchanged and remains the same as the first budget hearing. Funds have been really reallocated within the budget to accommodate for the two bus shelters discussed at the first budget hearing. And that's the end of my report.
I like that reallocation work, yeah.
Thank you.
That's it?
Excuse me, one minute. No one can be hurt.
No one can be, what do you mean? What do you mean no one can be hurt? Oh, you're saying the remote? Oh, so we have to do it all over again?
Did you have your speaker on?
All right, we're going to break for commercial at this point. We'll be right back. I did too. She told us to go ahead, right? Oh, how did they work out Saturday? The event, the cap event. Okay. Beforehand, yeah, but, yeah, yeah. Oh, so you did have to do that? Okay, all right. I thought that, I thought they were going to have Ron to do it. That always happens. Listen, life, that's life, what are you going to do? I was in bad shape this weekend. I got, I felt bad all week and I really, Friday, I got home and I said, I'm going to bed. I didn't, I didn't stay in the bed like until Sunday after, evening, late, almost evening. I canceled everything this weekend, this past weekend. Well, I went to the doctor today. He gave me some meds, we'll see.
How'd you feeling better, though?
I am feeling better right now, I, really, you know, it's, I, it's for me, anyway. I never know how bad I felt until I feel better.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Then you realize how bad you were, so.
Captain, can you hear me now?
It works for me all the time.
It wasn't a bad meeting this morning. We did, well, I'll talk about it, you know, comments, but. Are we good to go? All right, can you hear me now? Should I say that? I shouldn't say that, right? No, seriously, should she, should finance director do a report again?
There's no legal requirement for the, for the online attendance. This is a public meeting, you're having the meeting here in person. So there's no requirement if there's something technically wrong with it, there's, that won't preclude you from proceeding now.
Okay.
She could restate it if you wish.
I didn't get to the questions yet, yeah. Well, they said they didn't hear, so they don't know what they didn't hear. Just do it quickly, really quickly, yeah. Just to, so not everybody can hear.
Okay, the total proposed budget of 87,286,617 is unchanged and remains the same as from the first budget hearing. Funds have been reallocated within the budget to accommodate the two bus shelters discussed at the first budget hearing. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, now we will officially open the floor for comments from the public. Diane, do we have any advance comments on this budget hearing?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, Ray, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any comment cards this evening for this budget hearing, but if anyone here would like to comment, now we'll give you that opportunity. Of course, come on up, Miss. I, we know you, yes.
Diane Queller, 44-year resident of Royal Palm Beach. And I just want to thank Mr. Liggins and everybody for making our military rate at 1.92. I'm so surprised that we don't have more residents here coming and thanking you all. Because how many years is it, Ray, now that we've been at 1.92?
Since 2010, but the, the 15 years before that, we always lowered it.
Yeah.
So from 95 to 2010, we lowered it every year. In 2010 to now, it's been the same.
I mean, and also, too, people don't realize, I talk to my neighbors and coworkers that are Royal Palm Beach residents, that we are debt-free in this municipality. There's not many municipalities that can say that. And I really just want to say, all these years I've been coming to council, as you all know, I just want to thank everybody and gratitude for keeping this village up and going.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your, your thank you. We appreciate the input and thoughts from all the members in our, in our village. And we certainly thank you for the time and effort you've put in over the years to come here and, and let us know about things that we needed to know about. So thanks for coming this evening, we appreciate that. Is there anyone else here who would like to comment at this time? Going once, going twice? Okay, I'm going to close the floor now to public comments. And with that, I'll look for, to do the adoption of our final military rate of 1.9200 for the general fund. Can you read by title?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you said, it's Resolution Number 23-34, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting the final military rate for the Village of Royal Palm Beach for the fiscal year commencing on October 1st, 2023, and ending on September 30th, 2024, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. Unless there are questions or comments from members on council, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the final military rate of 1.9200 for the general fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls, Diane, let the record show that the adoption of the military rate of 1.9200 was approved 5-0. Next, I'd like to have the adoption of a final budget for fiscal year 2023-2024. And I'll look for you to read by title.
Thank you, as you said, Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number 23-35, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting its final budget for fiscal year 2023-2024, providing that the budget is hereby, excuse me, providing that the budget hereby adopted may be adjusted or modified by subsequent resolution of the Village Council under certain circumstances, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay, any members from council have questions or comments? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of the final budget and would like to thank staff for the real allocation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls, Diane, let the record show that adoption of the 2023-2024 budget was, was approved 5-0. And with that, this concludes our second budget hearing. I'm going to adjourn momentarily. If anybody wants to escape now, you can, I'll give you one minute. If not, you're going to be here for the regular meeting. Well, listen, people have things to do, I don't know. It's almost the end of September, I mean, where's the year gone, right? Okay, I will now call the order. The, the regular council meeting for the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Thursday, September 21st, the time is 6:41. And we've already done our Pledge of Allegiance. And Diane, all members of council are still present, okay? With that, we have a wonderful opportunity this evening for a presentation by Gina Livescu? I messed up your name, I know that. Who's an intake and compliance, intake and compliance manager from the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. But we also have another gentleman here, I think you, I remember the face, I can't remember the name. How, yes. Al, so glad to see you again, how you doing? You've been with this for a while now. Yes, it's been a while, okay. So thank you so much for coming this evening, I'd love to hear your comments.
Hi, good evening, my name is Gina Levek. I am the intake and compliance manager for the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. And I'm here today to talk to you about the Commission on Ethics and our goal to enhance the public's trust in government. In 2010, the Commission on Ethics was established as a result of a grand jury investigation and recommendation from 2009. And I have been with the office since inception, I'm the only remaining first employment.
Wow.
Yes. We were created to provide oversight, transparency, and accountability for over 12,000 elected officials, public employees, and advisory board members in the county. We also have jurisdiction over lobbyists, principals, and employers of lobbyists, as well as vendors. Our commission is independent of any county or municipal government, and our commission is made up of five volunteer members that are appointed from the community within, who are chosen by independent groups throughout the county. As you're aware, county government and every municipality in the county is subject to the ethics ordinances. The Code of Ethics is a 13-page document that creates a backstop to enhance public trust by ensuring that public officials and employees conduct themselves independently and impartially and do not use their offices for private gain. The key to a successful ethics program is education and prevention. Ongoing training, advisory opinions, and establishment of a culture of ethics is our goal. The ethics programs are simply designed to further the public's trust in government. The availability of our staff to train and answer questions through our advisory opinions, and there are about 530 to date on our website, may also prevent ethical misconduct from becoming criminal misconduct. And that's when Mr. Johnson would step in as his chief assistant state attorney.
I'm glad to hear that.
While the commission has statutory authority as a quasi-judicial code enforcement board to issue letters of reprimand, letters of recommendation, and even fines of up to $500 per violation, our goal is to educate those under our jurisdiction to prevent violations before they occur. All of our advisory opinions, gift forms, voting conflict forms, and outside employment forms, as well as complaints, are on our website and under our databases tab. In closing, you all are doing a great job, as attested to by the fact that the military rate has not gone up in the last 10 years. And I appreciate that because I'm a resident of Royal Palm.
I didn't know that. That's R2D2.
Okay. With that, in doing so, please remember your solemn duty to consider the ethics of your actions and ask first and act later. If anyone would like to speak with someone from our office, I answer the phone all the time. And I'm always available to answer questions. And if I can't make something up, I'll get somebody who can. In addition, I would like to introduce Elizabeth Martin, who is the newest member of our staff. We have gone from a, from the last 13 years, from a staff of five to a staff of six recently. So Elizabeth is going to be doing all of our community outreach.
That's lean.
Yes, she's going to be doing our community outreach. And so you will be seeing more of her throughout the county.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
I will see you again next year.
Okay, and listen, thank you so much, we appreciate it. And we certainly appreciate the fact that, the rigor that's been put in place over the years with the commission. And I think, you know, you read the papers today or see the news, this is something that we need more now than ever. And it's about making sure that we, we, we earn and continue to have the trust of our citizens. And this is one of the components that help make that possible. So thank you for coming this evening, we appreciate it. Now, if you want to escape, I'll give you 30 seconds. Thanks for that, okay. All right, with that, we're going to go to reports. I have a, I guess, an update today, this morning, it was a weird morning. There were three different things going on, and we were kind of all over the place with meetings at the time. But one of them was the Transportation Planning Agency's meeting this morning. Major, major point of, of discussion and activity was we did a review of our 2045 Transportation Improvement Plan. There were some updates on it. None of the updates or projects that were added have any impact in our local area. But there were some important projects that were included in our forecast for the, for the, for the tip. There was also a discussion on something called 2050. I thought I had the card with me. Oh, 2050 Vision, which is a, an initiative that the TPA staff has taken on to really get grassroots input from our citizens across the county. And the approach that they, one of the approaches they're using is to come in and, and speak with all 39 cities at their, at their council meetings. So we are on the list, I had us put on the list, for them to come talk to us. And I think it's important because the, one of the things I have found in talking with you, the citizens, is that there's a, a, two different generic viewpoints that are in place out there. Folks who've been involved in transportation planning for many, many years and really are smart people and professionals and, and know what they're doing, have this notion that where we live, all right, here in Palm Beach County, is not susceptible to a rigorous public transportation network being put in place. And that there's this propensity to think in terms of people will always opt to take their cars because that's what they want to do. What, I've talked to a lot of citizens who don't seem to feel that way. They would like the option of saying, you know what, I don't want to have to take my car where I'm going today because there's public transportation options and there's a, a network in place that makes that possible, and I can get where I want to go, when I want to get there, in a comfortable, safe way. So that's, when we talk about getting grassroots input and really codifying a vision going out to 2015, is what this initiative is about. It's going to be some things, some input, I would hope, that gives us some very vital statistical data on what people really feel about that. And I think it's going to be interesting. I think we're going to see that dichotomy that I just spoke about emerge in this process. So with that, any questions on today's?
Did they say anything about the light rail that they were talking about before they came from West Palm down here to Stairway 7, or they still?
That conversation is, is kind of on the side right now. But it's interesting, you meant light rail, you know. I have a very different concept of what light rail is than if you talk to existing transportation professionals. And I don't envision, you know, four or five cars showing up every hour. I envision maybe one car showing up every five minutes that can accommodate 20, maybe 30 people. And I envision a system where it's not driven by people, but driven by technology. And the system knows that at certain times of the day, I'm And the system knows that at certain times of the day, I'm gonna put the 50-car one on the tracks to go back and forth. But that is, this is an example of the different visions in terms of, you know, where, what, coming to the table, what are you bringing there in terms of what your predeterminations are. So, it's, it's interesting conversation. It's continuing, but it's important conversation because we have to evolve a common sense of that vision and stop saying, we don't do that now, so that's not what we're gonna do in the future, because we are truly talking about laying the groundwork for where we're gonna be in the future. And I don't know about you, but I don't want people 40 years from now saying, what were they thinking back then? You know, why didn't they come up with some solutions that they will now then realize 40 years from now? So, okay. The other thing I'd like to do this evening, and I'm gonna ask our village managers to give us some, some background data on it, is I'd like to officially welcome, the name is? Sunset Isles. I don't know why I keep saying Yellowstone. Welcome Sunset Isles as part of the Village Royal Palm Beach. Those of you who may not know it, Sunset Isles is enclaved within the village, all right? And that created some interesting dynamics, one of them being, you know, how do we respond in terms of security, you know, and the police protection, because they really weren't part of the village? That changes now because they are now officially members of the village, and I'll ask the village manager maybe to give us some details about that.
So, the, the final hearing was at, or the final vote on it was at the county commission meeting a few months ago, right? A month and a half ago?
June 13th.
June 13th. And so, that now, and there was a 30-day period after that. So, all that time has passed, and now they are officially in the village. We did notify Bieber on the numbers to get the, the population numbers in there. And we're looking at, we want to do a welcoming package.
Welcome package, yeah.
So, in the clerk's office, they have the, you know, the welcoming, the pamphlet for new homeowners. So, we'll put that together in some, the most recent Community Connection, most recent Vector, the most recent Village Voice, and, and get that to them and welcome them with a nice, nice welcoming letter.
So, on behalf of the entire village council, welcome to Royal Palm Beach. We hope you, you're already here, now you're here. Okay, with that, Selena, why don't we start with you?
Good evening, everyone. This morning, I attended the Progress Palm Beach County Economic Summit, which was by the Central and Hispanic Chambers of Commerce. They talked about the importance of trade industry. So, when we talk about education and what professions our students are going into, one of them that they did emphasize was the trade industry. So, they are always looking for people there. They said the average age of employees in Palm Beach County is 39.5 years old. And I found that interesting because when you look back 20 years ago, the average population, exactly. So, it's a lot, you know, the influx coming in and how many people moving to Florida, and specifically Palm Beach County. Employees, when they're looking for staff, are looking, their skill set that they're looking for the most are soft skills, which I found interesting because they thought they were learning that at home, and they're not. So, a lot of it is, how do you receive feedback? Are you resilient? So, they talked about when you have to have those difficult conversations with your employees, and they don't know how to receive the information because they've never been told you did something wrong. So, it's just interesting to see the generations, you know, we have, this is, I think 2020 was the first year. We had five generations in the workforce. So, talking about the baby boomers to the Gen Zs that are going through, so everybody in there and stuff. The other thing that they talked about was workforce and affordable housing, so that 10% of the homes in Palm Beach County are valued over $1 million. And to put that in comparison, in Broward County, it's only 3%. So, you can kinda see the difference of the affordability in this county versus not. They talked about the $200 million bond to developers for shovel-ready projects and for land, specifically for housing. And then they talked about from the county perspective that they have a dashboard where municipalities can add the inventory that they have for new housing and construction. So, for instance, it was, we're building, we can then put that up there, and then they can share that with employers. And along the same lines with the, the housing, is that the Women's Chamber of Commerce is doing an impact of affordable housing. So, it's on the panel, it's October 12th, and its Habitat for Humanity will be on the panel, along with Palm Beach County Housing Leadership and a developer. So, just to see is how the housing market does impact everybody overall, families to employers, to everybody, and what the next generation is going through. So, you can go on women'schamber.biz for that information. In the village, we have the green market starting back up again. So, October 14th, we go back to every Saturday right outside. We have the Rockin' and Fall Festival on October 6th and 7th over at Commons Park. And I would like to say thank you very much to our longtime employee Lou Recchio, who's our Director of Parks and Recs, who's retiring. So, I'd like to wish him well, and thank you very much for his years of service. And finally, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Richard, please.
I have no report, but I wasn't gonna out the mayor, so.
Thank you.
Likewise, happy birthday. Fantastic. So, we conducted our first full meeting of the Education Advisory Board here in Royal Palm Beach two weeks ago, as a matter of fact, and we had Western Academy Charter School showcase. You know, each, each month, we bring in one school, actually out of the six that we have now. Actually, to be technically correct, we actually have seven now, since we have the Learning Center, which is also a charter school specializing in teaching autistic children. We're looking to fold them in as well, so as to give them an opportunity to come and talk to the community. But it's not just the community, it's also the school district that is well-represented at every meeting, including the school board. So, this time around, we got to hear from Principal Siri Miller and her staff, and they talked about the A-rated performing school that is Western Academy. And I know Rich has had his kids go there, and, and so, it's, it's a reputation that they maintain. It's an excellent reputation. They're ranked among the top 1% of all charter schools in Florida, and they are constantly achieving outstanding results in math and special areas. They were one of the first schools here in Royal Palm Beach to have a STEAM program, that adds arts to the more technical skills. And, and so, we're delighted to have them here. One of the things they were saying is that 100% of all of the students who graduate from the 5th and the 8th grades at Western Academy end up graduating from high school. It's pretty good. So, there's a lot of good stuff going on over there, and that's one of our outstanding set of schools, as a matter of fact. From the school district, like I said, they show up. We actually had the police chief, Sarah Mooney, reporting to us about the kind of initiatives that are underway right now at the schools to keep the students safe. I mean, at one point in time, we were talking about school safety. No, it's student safety that we're talking about. So, one of the things that was brought up has to do with zero tolerance for bringing weapons onto campus. And supporting that is a pilot program that they have with metal detectors at several of the high schools. Their, their approach is basically the same thing that is used at, at a number of major events, whether it be a concert or some other major activity, that allows large numbers of people to proceed at a reasonable rate through the entrance, and yet detecting to see whether or not there, there is any indication of a weapon or something of that nature. So far, it's worked out well. In fact, they were surprised at how smoothly it's gone so far. The plan is, if it continues to go smoothly, is to introduce these metal detectors at all of our high schools in Palm Beach County. In addition to that, that's, that's kind of dealing with violence that we have going on in our schools in one way. Another way is to go for the root cause, and that includes mental health and behavioral health kinds of activities. One of the things the school system has done is, they actually have co-located with each school, 115 of the schools anyway, mental health and behavioral health professionals readily available for the kids. And one of their major efforts right now is toward removing the stigma of asking for help. And, and in teaching that mental health is like physical health, and we ought not to be thinking about it any differently. So, that's really headed in a direction where I think we are actually addressing the root cause of some of the behaviors that we find so problematic in our society today. So, good for the school district. They're doing some really good work in, in that area. One of the things, unfortunately, is that there's a shortage of mental health and behavioral health professionals. Actually, there's a shortage of healthcare professionals, and it's not just here in South Florida or Florida. It's, it's, it's national, and that was certainly a point that was made. So, if, if anyone knows, the school system is looking for the mental health professionals, and if you know any that are interested, they, just get in touch with the school district, and they'd be more than happy to, to engage these folks in doing something that's really important in our schools. One of the other things that I did want to mention is, we have a new chair, our new Education Advisory Board Chair. Her name is Paula Wilson. She sets a great example of studying hard. Before she sat through her first meeting, she watched several of the previous meetings to really get the handle on how to do it, and she knocked it out of the park. So, we've got a great board going on right now. We've got a lot of, we've got principals showing up on a regular basis. We've got the school district being well-represented, and so, we invite you all to come. And it's the second Monday of, of every month. September 8th, Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee has met in Orlando for the first of three meetings. The purpose of this is to bring together the, the power of, of a collective effort among all of the 411 cities in, in the state of Florida around specific issues or priorities that we consider to be most important. The way we get to those issues is a series of meetings that we had, and this was the first meeting. At the first meeting, we usually get kind of a broad scope of a lot of different subjects brought up, and this was one of those. We talked about affordable housing. We talk about affordable housing a lot, but in particular, we talked about the Live Local Act, which, which has a lot of preemptions, which causes us problems from time to time as we try to make decisions at the lowest possible level. One of the, the good things about this act is it was put in place with an openness to modifying it through what they call a glitch bill at some point in time. If there's evidence of problems being created that weren't intended to be challenges for communities and for residents. So, we're gonna keep an eye on that. That will probably remain as one of the priorities as we get closer to the upcoming session. Talked about law enforcement, recruiting, and retention. That's another issue in this state. Cybersecurity, short-term rentals, building permitting process, that was an interesting discussion, and things like mobility plans. I know our mayor has talked about something called vertaports, vertical takeoff and landing aircraft. They're kind of a Jetson idea, but not in your local home necessarily. But the notion is, there are many different modes of travel, and if you can mix them correctly, you can avoid what otherwise would be inevitable traffic congestion that will drive us all nuts. So, it's good that the state's taking a hard look at this. They're also taking a hard look at the declining gas tax. You know, as we see more and more electric vehicles on the road, they don't use gas. The money that the state would normally get for the operation and maintenance of our road system winds up declining, and we're gonna see more and more of that. So, there's some ideas that legislature is gonna be taking on about how to generate the, the lost revenue associated with EVs, as a matter of fact. And I think that the last thing I want to say is, Save the Date. We've been doing Read for the Record now for about 10 years, and, and we are going to be reading this book this year on October the 26th with lots of love. Tug of your heart, right? And, and believe me, each one of us has read at the elementary school level or preschool. It's a great experience. It's a great experience for everybody. The kids love it. I think we love it more. And so, this looks like a good book. It's gonna be a challenge because some of it is, for those who don't speak Spanish, it might be a bit of a challenge. So, a little bit of training is a good thing.
Brush up on your Spanish?
Yeah, there's a good, good amount in here. So, it'll, it'll be interesting. It'll be fun, but it's an important thing to do. For those of you who don't know, this Read for the Record is put on by Literacy Coalition of Palm Beach County, but it's in conjunction, it's a nationwide activity. So, on one day, this year, October the 26th, this book will be read nationwide, across the country, in schools that usually are mostly elementary schools, but some preschools as well. And it turns out that we wind up reading to millions of kids and having a lot of people involved in doing something really important, and that has shown kids how exciting, how important reading really is. So, that completes my report.
Good. Thank you. Looking forward to Read for the Record again. Yes. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Speaking of Spanish, Viva la Horencia Hispania. It's National Hispanic Month.
Very good.
I want you to read with me.
Okay. I'll translate for you. So, I just want to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. A couple of other things when it comes to voting. I know I mentioned this at a, a previous meeting, but I want to repeat it again. If you have signed up to have a vote-by-mail ballot sent to you in the past, you need to do it again because they've cleared the records and all previous signups have been deleted. And as you get your new ballot, you can track it with this app called Ballot Trax, T-R-A-X. It's an opt-in alert, and you can get it either email via text or voicemail, and it'll tell you when your ballot's been mailed and when it's been received by the supervisor of elections. And they'll notify you if there's been any errors in it, and you can fix it really quickly before election day. And then the last thing about elections is the supervisors recruiting election workers. 5,000 they need.
Really?
Yeah. And so, you get paid, and it's in our local precincts. So, you can find all this information that I've just shared on votepalmbeach.gov. And then, one more little point of information. The SHINE program training is being offered by the Palm Beach County Library. SHINE stands for Serving Health Insurance Needs of Elders. And so, if you want to learn about Medicare basics, and there's two options available for each beneficiary, the training information can be found at pbclibrary.org. And that concludes my report.
No report, Mayor.
No report. Nice to be with you all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That will conclude our reports this evening. Right now, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time to do that. Any petitions out there? No? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the floor to petitions. We will now look for statements from the public on non-agenda items or items on a consent agenda. Diane, we have any advance comments in that regard?
No, Mayor, no.
Anyone? No hands raised? Wow, okay. I haven't received any comment cards on non-agenda items or consent agenda items, but if anyone would like to comment, now would be the time to do that? No? No. Okay. Then I'm closing the floor to non-agenda item items, agenda items, and to consent agenda items, and ask Diane to give us a consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I will. Thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of August 17th, 2023. Two, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute the first addendum to interlocal agreement for administrative services between the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency and the Village Royal Palm Beach. Three, approval of bid award and authorization for the village manager to enter into contract with Horizon Air Conditioning Incorporated, the lowest responsible responsive bidder in the amount of $84,792 annual cost for air conditioning monthly maintenance. Funding for the AC monthly maintenance is budgeted in fiscal year '24 public works operating budget. Four, adoption of Resolution Number 2339, a resolution of the Village Council of the Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting a revised schedule of fees and charges, specifically repealing Resolution 2234, providing that this schedule of fees and charges shall be available for inspection at all times at the village hall during regular business hours, providing effective date for other purposes. Five, approval to purchase two Polygon Shelter pavilions at Crestwood Park North in an amount not to exceed $125,000 by piggybacking Clay County Term Contract Number 1819-2 from Rep Services Incorporated. This project, PR 2102, is budgeted in account number 301-7200-5726392. Six, approval to purchase a playground apparatus from Miracle Recreation Equipment Company and have it installed at Crestwood Park North. Purchase amount shall not exceed $150,000 through Sourceball Contract Number 010521 LTS. Seven, authorization to reject all bids received and opened at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, August 30th, 2023 for custodial services. Eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into professional services agreement for municipal engineering services with Erdman Anthony for with Erdman Anthony for various projects in the Village Royal Palm Beach. Nine, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a sports lighting equipment and services agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for Crestwood North Park. The cost for said services shall not exceed two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, and funds will come from projects PR two-one zero-two. Ten, approval and authorization to renew annual software licensing and technical maintenance support with Superior and Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars. Eleven, excuse me, approval of a special event permit.
You want some water, Diane?
Pardon me?
You want some water? No? You're good? Okay.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Approval of a special event permit for the Village Royal Palm Beach to hold Rock and Fall Fest on Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three, from five P M to ten P M, and Saturday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three, from one P M to nine P M at Royal Palm Beach Commons. Twelve, approval of special event permit application for Catskill Hunts of Florida LLC to hold a haunted house on Friday and Saturday nights from October sixth, twenty twenty-three through the month of October, twenty twenty-three at Royal Palm Beach Commons. Thirteen, approval of a seasonal vendor permit for Our Lady Queen of the Apostles Catholic Church to hold their annual pumpkin patch fundraiser at one hundred, Crestwood Boulevard from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Fourteen, approval of special event permit for the Village Royal Palm Beach to hold a green market and bazaar at Village Hall every Saturday beginning October fourteenth, twenty twenty-three through April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, from nine A M to one P M. Fifteen, approval to purchase six Skyway Shade Structures through RUP Services Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty cents with pricing through Clay County Contract Number eighteen nineteen dash two, effective through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Sixteen, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the third addendum lease agreement between the village and Eats and Teas Cafe LLC, now doing business as Parkside Cafe and Catering LLC to provide for the first one-year renewal term beginning October first, twenty twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any questions or comments from members on council? If not, I look for a motion.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There are motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If we have no opposed, Diane let the record show that the consent agenda was approved five-zero. Now we'll move forward to our regular agenda. Agenda, regular agenda item R one is a public hearing pursuant to section one-six-three point three-two-two-five, sub-one. Florida statutes by the village council to consider application number two-three dash zero-eight-one, requesting approval of amended and restated development agreement between the village and the developer to revise the minimum unit sizes and average unit sizes to accommodate two additional units for the Total Royale Pod Three multifamily development located approximately point-two-three miles west of State Road seven. This is not a quasi judicial zone. Is that right?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. The original development agreement was approved by the village council on two thousand, in two thousand and nineteen and recorded in the official records of Palm Beach County, Florida Book three oh, three zero seven five two. Can you see my screen now? The current request is to revise the minimum unit sizes and average unit sizes to accommodate two additional units for the Total Royale Pod Three multifamily development. All of the other sizes of the units will stay the same. It's just the minor movement of not when you add the two units to the original unit sizes averages. The local planning agency on September eighteenth recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Does the applicant choose to make any comments?
Thank you. Thanks again, Bradford. I just wanted to reiterate that this would otherwise just be an administrative review process with the units being added, but the developers' agreement is what triggers the council hearing it. So it's something that we've been working with staff throughout. Thank you.
Okay. Diane, we have any public comments prior to, for agenda item R one? None? Ray, we have any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards for agenda item R one. Would anybody here like to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment for agenda item R one and ask for comments and questions from members on council. If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
No, I just have a quick question, and either one of you could answer this. So just for clarification, you're not asking for revising the minimum unit sizes for all of them. It's just I need, I know you need to accommodate two more, but how many of them are shrinking and by how much?
They, they aren't. They're all staying the same. It's just the minor change in the averages and the number of units by adding these two units to the overall mixtures.
So how are we fitting these two units in if they were put in? It was pretty tight to begin with. So how are we adding two more without accommodating, readjusting the sizes?
The, it, it was shown on the, the actual plans themselves had these units in there. It was just a miscounting on the applicant's part.
Okay, so they were always in there.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R one.
Second.
There are motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item R one was approved five-zero. Okay, agenda item R two is a public hearing to consider application number two-three dash zero four seven, an application by HM two V Inc. An approval of ordinance number one zero three seven on second reading to change the future land use designation of one parcel totaling approximately two-two-three-five, two-point-two-three-five acres from the village's open space land use designation to the village's industrial land use designation for a property located on six-eight-four-six Seminole Palms Drive. This is not quasi judicial, so get Brian your.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to repeat the, what you just said, so I'm just going to jump right in. The property is currently vacant and was recently put under contract for sale by the village to Paint Lux. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop the property for the purpose of enlarging the existing Paint Lux facility parking lot. The justification statement further states that no storage of any material and/or equipment, disabled vehicles of any kind will occur. In reviewing the proposed future land use map amendment, designating the parcel as industrial, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and whether the action requested would exacerbate any existing public facility capacity deficits in regards to roadway network, sanitary sewer, solid waste, drainage, pot of water, and recreation in open space. And concluded that it meets the review requirements for future land use map amendment and therefore recommending approval of this application. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this applicant, or recommended approval of this application by a vote of five to zero. Village Council considered this application on first reading on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three and wrote recommended vote of five to zero. And again, staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Does the applicant choose to make any comments?
Yes. Good evening. I'm Vincent Kaper on behalf of the, the property owner. If you have any questions, I'm here to address them.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, I need to read this one by title since you're approving on second reading the ordinance. I'll read it quickly. Ordinance number ten thirty-seven, an ordinance to the village council of Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, adopting an amendment to its comprehensive development plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in section one-sixty-three point three-one-eight-seven at SEC Florida statutes pursuant to a privately initiated application number twenty-three dash zero four seven, SCPA, which provides for an amendment to the village future land use map designating zero-point-two-three-five plus or minus acres, more or less of real property as industrial, which property is located at six-eight-four-six Seminole Palms Drive, informally known as Paint Lux Auto Body, further providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
I think they teach that in law school. Okay, thanks. Thank you so much. Do we have any prior comments from the public on agenda item R two?
No, Mayor.
Ray, we have any comments? Hands raised for agenda item R two?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R two. If someone would like to comment, now give them the opportunity. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R two. Questions or comments from members on council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item R two.
Second.
There are motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show agenda item R two is approved five-zero. Thank you. Agenda item R three is a public hearing to consider application number two-zero, two-zero, two-three dash zero four four, an application by HM two V Inc., an approval of ordinance number one zero three nine on first reading. The applicant is seeking a rezoning approval to rezone approximately point-two-three-five acre parcel from the village's open space zoning district to the industrial general zoning district for a property located at six-eight-four-six Seminole Palms Drive.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Again, the property is currently vacant. The applicant has indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop the property.
Let me start you in. This one is quasi judicial. Sorry. Do you raise your right hand? I'll swear you in too, Mr. Kaper, at the same time. Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, told truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And I'll ask for council ex parte disclosures. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. I missed that one.
The justification statement further states that no storage of any material or equipment or disabled vehicles of any kind will occur. In reviewing the zoning map amendment, designating the parcel as industrial, village staff considered compatibility with the adjacent land uses zoning code of ordinances, consistency with the village's comprehensive plan, and whether the actions requested will exacerbate any public facility capacity deficits. The village staff concluded that this application meets all relevant concurrency level of service standards and therefore is recommending approval of this application. This zoning designation is consistent with the land use designation that was just approved. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved this application on September eighteenth and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Again, staff is recommending approval of this application. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bradford. Do you, applicant, you choose to make comments?
I'm here to answer.
Yes, the questions. Okay, good. Diane, do we have any public comments prior?
No, Mayor.
All right. Do we have to read by title?
I do need to read this one again. I'm sorry, sir. It's ordinance number ten thirty-nine, an ordinance to the village council of Village Royal Palm Beach, Florida, providing for the rezoning of certain real property within the corporate limits of the village, which property consists of one parcel of land comprising a total of zero-point-two-three-five plus or minus acres, more or less located at six-eight-four-six Seminole Palms Drive, informally known as Paint Lux Auto Body, providing that this parcel of real property, which are, should be, is more specifically described herein, shall be assigned the village zoning designation of IG Industrial General, providing that the zoning map of the Village Royal Palm Beach be amended to reflect the proper designation for this parcel of real property, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes. And I'll correct that typo for second reading.
I'm sorry. What'd you say?
There's a typo. They're, I'll correct it for second reading. Sorry, sir.
I thought that's what you said. That's what makes it. All right, great. I think I was looking for public comment. Any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
R three. I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R three. If anyone here would like to, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment for agenda item R three. Comments from members on council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Make motion to approve regular agenda item three.
Second.
There are motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R three was approved five-zero. Agenda item R four is a public hearing to consider application number two-two dash six three, an ordinance number one zero three six on second reading, an application by Royal Palm Brewing Company amending the village code to amend sections two-six dash seven-five point two and two-six dash eight-nine to eliminate the current prohibition on outdoor seating and patron congregation directly abutting residential zoning districts, which would allow for such use subject to variance approval and increase the square footage limitation for brew pubs and microbreweries from five thousand to six thousand. This is square feet, I guess, right? Footage limitation for brew pubs and microbreweries. Okay, specifically requested for property located at five-four-three North State Road seven. This is a quasi judicial process, so we'll have to have you sworn in.
Thank you. Can you state your names for the record, please?
George Shetka.
Thank you. Anyone else who's going to speak, state your name, please, and then I'll swear you in.
Amala Shetka.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Shetka.
Thank you. Can you raise your right hands for me? Do you all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you. I'll turn to council for ex parte disclosures.
With staff.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I'll, what you read is sufficient for reading the ordinance by title, so I don't need to read this one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant Royal Palm Brewery Company is requesting a text amendment to the village code of ordinances to amend section twenty-six seventy-five point two and twenty-six eighteen, twenty-six eighty-nine to eliminate the current prohibition of outdoor seating and patron congregation directly abutting residential zoning districts, which would allow for such use to be subject to a variance approval by village council and to increase the square footage limitation for brew pubs and microbreweries for five thousand to six, from five thousand to six thousand square feet. On this slide is the summary of the proposed text amendments. There has been a change to the permitting mechanism to allow for outdoor seating areas or areas of patron congregation directly abutting residential zoning district from the special exception to the variance variance approval by village council. Additionally, this text amendment will allow a maximum of six thousand square feet brew pubs. The local planning agency considered this application on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The village council considered ordinance one zero three six on first reading on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three and voted to approve by a vote of four to one with Councilwoman Samuel, Samuel dissenting. Staff is recommending approval of application twenty-three sixty-three. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Does the applicant choose to make any comments?
Uh, yeah, we have a quick presentation. I gotta give it to you. When we were here last month, there were some questions that were asked, and we may have not had the most whatever answers for them. So what we did is we went ahead and, and I don't know which one it is. Do you see the presentation or no? Wrong. Which one? What, what's that named? What's that computer name? I'm not seeing it. That's Bradford's. At the conference room, the control room.
Is it plugged in phone correctly?
It's not showing up.
Where you should see publicly there.
There it is. There you are. All right. So again, thank you for having us and thank you for taking the time to hear, to, to listen to our presentation here. Again, we're Royal Palm Brewing Company. There it goes. All right. Jeff is going to start out, but I wanted to make note that this picture was taken on a, on a Monday right before Monday Night Football. So as you can see, it's not the busiest it's been in a minute, but again, we just followed up Oktoberfest, so that probably has something to do with that. Go ahead, Jeff.
So what we're presenting today is Belterra Approval. We just got a, we just received updated approval, letter from them. Recap on noise and sound, relationship between trucks or truck traffic size and our brewing operation. And can distribution revenue offset outdoor seating revenue? And why didn't we move into the bay to the east? These were some questions that were brought up last time, so we're And why didn't we move into the bay to the east? These were some questions that were brought up last time, so we're answering them. All right. So this is a copy of the Belterra approval letter. The last one we had was from eleven five, twenty eighteen. We figured that probably needed a little updating just to make sure they still were okay with us having outdoor seating, and they are. So as discussed in the last meeting, the noise level of sixteen people speaking on the patio would be around twenty-eight decibels. This past Oktoberfest event was our, actually our second busiest day since we've opened. Our special event permit allowed us to have more outdoor seating than what would be allowed with the approval from the council. We had no complaints. Law enforcement was not called, and people went outside because it was quieter than inside our taproom. And like I say, the graphs to the right are basically a recap of what we spoke about last. There's a picture. My wife and child are actually in their back there. So the relationship between truck traffic and size of brewing operations. So basically this, we put together this graph, basically, you know, showing types of trucks that go in and out of our plaza on a daily basis at all hours of the day. And then basically, you know, what trucks would, you know, what trucks are coming in for us? What trucks would come in if we were just a restaurant? Current other retailers in the plaza, and then, you know, just the notes are those different retailers that receive that. So as you can see, the the biggest thing here that we would want to, you know, take a look at is the only truck that's coming in for us and not any other store in the plaza would be grain deliveries. And you'll see in a further slide that, you know, we get ten a year. All right. So we conduct a monthly inventory and submit it to the state of Florida. Twice a year, we're audited to ensure that those numbers are accurate to both federal and state agencies. We currently have six fermenters totaling thirty-five barrels. Year to date, we have produced one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine gallons of canned beer and six thousand five hundred and seventy-three gallons of bulk kegged beer totaling seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-two gallons of beer in two thousand twenty-three through August. There are thirty-one gallons of, thirty-one gallons in a barrel of beer. At full production, we have brewed two hundred and fifty-five barrels of beer this year, and we are projected to brew three hundred and eighty-two barrels of beer this year. So grain deliveries to Royal Palm Brewing. So our current brewing space is nine hundred square feet. Our expanded brewing operation is two thousand four hundred and ninety square feet, which is an increase of one hundred and seventy-seven percent. If our productions increase proportionally with the expanded brewery, we can expect to brew six hundred and seventy-five barrels of beer in two thousand twenty-four. So the village code allows us to brew fifteen thousand barrels of beer in a year, but only allows us five thousand square feet. If you calculate our production to space correlation, we will need fifty-five thousand square feet of brewery to achieve fifteen thousand barrels, which is not what we're looking to do. So in two thousand twenty-three, we have had, we've, we've had five grain deliveries from LD Carlson and two from BSG. And so it's a total of seven, and we are projected then to receive ten and a half deliveries in two thousand twenty-three. And that's one thing that should be noted about that is that's, you know, even if we doubled our capacity, those deliveries would be the same because, you know, we obviously get discounted rates if we order more. So the truck traffic would not actually increase. So all there, although there can be an increase in production, the extra space will afford us to order more grains, saving on shipping costs and ultimately reducing the total number of grain deliveries.
All right. So again, we talked about it last time, but our revenues have dropped about nine point six percent, almost ten percent from when we removed our outdoor seating. It's a big thing what we do. One of the questions, questions that was brought up, well, if you're losing outdoor seating or you're expanding, what that, you know, make up for, your distribution make up for? And you can see here that only four percent of our revenues come from distribution, although sixteen percent of our beer goes out to it. It's how business works. We have to sell at a lower price. So when you go to a, a, and retailer, whether it be a world of beer, it be, you know, Papa Chulo's or wherever down the street, they've got to make money. I think they sell about the same amount we do. So we're kind of the same business once it hits that restaurant, right? We're, we're both pricing it the same because we're both trying to take care of it. Again, we'll make a little bit more this year in distribution, but it's, it's definitely not enough for a, for a nano brewery to do on its own. I mean, everybody will tell you that you can't survive on distribution alone. And again, the reason we distribute is we want to keep the beer fresh. People want a variety. You can only sell so much out of the taproom, or so far we've only been able to sell so much. But people want a variety. Every time they don't want half a gallon, every time they don't want a thousand things, every time they want something different, right? So you can see here what we did also is we showed you what our in-house beer sales were versus everything else we saw. I mean, our kitchen food has really gone up. Obviously, guest beverages being like wines and things like that. The question people have too, and we, another question was asked is why we didn't move east? And I want to make it real simple and let everyone know what the village code allows for five thousand square feet. That's what we're here for and talking about today. Our current suite is two hundred and sixty-six seventy-nine, bay one oh six that we took, and bay one oh seven. You can see that bring our total square footage of four thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine square feet, which falls within the village guideline of five thousand. So that's why we went that way. We're requesting, you know, the six thousand to obtain the outdoor seating and of one hundred and eighty-nine square feet is what we've asked for. So technically, we're only going to use five thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. So we're only going up one hundred and sixty-eight feet over what is already allowed. I mean, that's really what we're, we're trying to do here. Because whether we go to the, the yoga studio to move out, that's going to put us over. Obviously, Laurel Lay, the, the old salon is way over. So what we talked about here is bay one oh one, which is formerly Laurel Lay. I think I actually rented it recently. Somebody was in there yesterday. Is thirty-two hundred square feet and the outdoor patio space is about eighteen hundred when I talked to Bradford about it, bringing it to about seventy-six hundred square feet with our current bay. Village code doesn't allow it, and we weren't willing to take the risk of no rent abatement for seventy-five hundred dollars a month when we first submitted that application on May third, two thousand and twenty-two. And, and again, I want to put on here too that, you know, and I want to make that clear that we've been reproached and that we've been asked about the Friendly's building. And as it's written right now in the code, nobody could go in there if it was a brewery. If a brewery wanted to go into the old Friendly's building, they couldn't. Even with the six thousand square feet, I think the building itself is seven thousand, plus the outdoor seating space counts as well. So you're probably looking at eight, nine thousand square feet there. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know it's well over what we're allowed now. And that's a picture there of, of essentially what the Laurel Lay salon is, is what it is. And with the outdoor seating that we would have been afforded, if we could take it over, it would be the green box. Whereas you can see the little tiny red box inside the blue scare is what we're asking for now. Just to give you a visual of what it is. Definition breweries too. The other thing that keeps getting brought up and, and, you know, other than being called Royal Palm Beach Brewing, which is one of our kind of things, but the biggest thing is, is that we're a restaurant and we're a nano brewery. Because I think when, if you, unless you've seen our business and what we do, people think like a brewery, you think, you know, funky Buddhas of the world, Deuce Souths, you know, those, those big breweries that are pumping out a lot of stuff. We're a nano brewery, which means we make less than two thousand barrels of beer annually. As we said, we're on pace to make roughly four hundred or whatever it was. Again, we're, we're visited by the state of Florida Health Department twice a year minimum. We have a restaurant license. We're not a brew pub as we're out commonly referred, as I just said, and we're also not a micro brewery. Micro breweries make two thousand barrels or more. We are not a micro brewery. We are a nano brewery. And I think that's important when we talk about traffic into the building and we talk about how many people are in there and the size of our business. We're a micro business. A, a small business makes a million dollars or more. We don't make a million. I wish we did. We're working on it, but we're not there yet. And again, the other thing is a brew pub, although we sell to more than twenty-five percent of our beer on site and operate a significant food service, brew, brew pubs cannot distribute beer in Florida. We distribute beer. That's why we have a restaurant license. Because we were, part of the deal is if we wanted a commercial, we had to have food. So we do, and it's growing. As you can see, it's almost, it's over thirty percent of our total revenues. Dixie Bar and Grill is an example of a, of a brew pub. And both Palm Beach County and the Village Royal Palm Business License classify us as a restaurant. So, which I thought was interesting. I actually paid it today, and I thought that was worth bringing up as well. So this is our brewery license. This is what we have to have, our manufacturer of malt beverages. This is our, our, a copy of our, our restaurant license, right? And what we can see. That's why the health department comes and visits us. That's why we're able to stay open during COVID and have to-go food and to-go beer, and a lot of breweries shut down. So we were very thankful. We, we were asked and, you know, basically told we had to have food, so it kept us alive. This is a copy. It's kind of hard to read, but these are the Palm Beach County and Village Royal Palm Beach licenses. And if you look at the description, and I, I brought this up before, and, and I do get told that's not what it is, George, is we are classified as a restaurant. That's what we pay our business tax on. I don't know if that means anything at the grand scheme of things, but we are not, and I think it's important, we're not a micro brewery that makes two thousand barrels of beer or more. We are not a, a brew pub that cannot distribute. We can do both of those. We are both a restaurant and a brewery. We're a restaurant that manufactures its own beer essentially. So in conclusion, again, and, and again, I appreciate your guys' time. Royal Palm Beach is our home. This is where we live. We pay taxes here. We vote here. We do all the things here. This is our home. This is where we live. Obviously, the, the community wants it. The, the, the fact that Oktoberfest was a huge success and a lot of it was because we were outside until the rain came was good, and then it came back after the rain. We also said semi truck traffic will not increase to the level of other tenants in the plaza. The other tenants get way more deliveries than we do, and they come at all hours of the night. Ours are there between ten and six because, quite honestly, we're busy in the morning and we're serving beers and doing things at night. We can't take it any other time. Neighbor Beliterra has give, twice given us permission to move forward with our outdoor dining. We, history has shown zero documented instances, of course, right up to Oktoberfest a couple of days ago. We also submitted our application, and, and this is important to us, five hundred and forty-six days ago was when we first submitted our application. In resubmital fees and everything else, we are almost at nine thousand dollars if what it's cost us to get to this point and talk to you folks. And, and quite honestly, we're just, we're, we're, we're ready for a, a resolution. It, it's, it's been a toll. It's been time. It's been effort. It's been stress. It's been all of those things, and we need to run our business. As a restaurant that manufactures its own beer, like I said, I think we have an unfair competitive disadvantage to other restaurants and bars, many of which that serve our beers and, like I said, serve stronger alcohol, cocktails, martinis, Manhattans, all of those good things, right? And, and there's, there's one in town that has it, and it's right down the street, and I know they're trying to do some stuff now too. And, and it's not fair to us that we can't in, in this regard. And, and again, the biggest thing is if, if we had not that manufacturing license that I showed you earlier, this would be a moot point. We would be allowed to have our outdoor seating. Because we're a restaurant that manufactures its own beer, we cannot have outdoor seating. And if we bought it from somewhere else and we had the same menu and the same food and everything we do now, we would be allowed and we would not even be standing here right now. All right. Again, I appreciate your guys' time and your, your consideration, and if there's any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Diane, do we have any prior comments on agenda item R four? Ray, you have any, any hands raised agenda item R four?
No, Mayor.
I do not have any comment cards submitted on this agenda item. Would anyone here like to comment? Seeing none, I'm closing public comment to agenda item R four. Open the comments for members on council.
I, I had some before, and now I have even more, just based on that. But it was very nice presentations though. So thank you very much for taking the time to do that. So just for clarification, and I don't want maybe staff or you guys want to answer it. We talked about this before the last time, was that the food sale is that now you registered as a restaurant? And that if you were a different location, that you would be able to have outdoor seating? But is it because you have the brewery license that you can't, you're not considered a restaurant, even though all your licenses say that you're a restaurant?
I don't know that. I, I, I don't know. I, I, me, I don't know.
No, let me, all right. So Brad, staff.
Okay, so the brew pub special exception that they got five thousand square feet or less, so that brew pub, that is what is triggering the, if you're adjacent to residential, then you can't have outdoor seating.
Okay, so it is because.
If it was purely a restaurant and just like Duffy's down the road, they're adjacent to multifamily, they are allowed to have outdoor seating.
So because when they came in and, and, when they first came in five years ago and asked for this classification, if they just opened up as a restaurant, then we wouldn't be talking about this. Could they still brew on site if they were a restaurant?
No, that's when they become a brew pub. That's, that's the special exception. These were, they, they are now entering into the brew pub.
Okay. And back real quick. So your statistics of where you had before, your dollar amount of what you bring in annually for, or your percentage of food sales versus your percentage of alcohol sales or beer sales? Is it more beer than food? Is it?
It's more beer than food, yeah.
So I think it's forty-sixty is the rule?
Well, there's not really a rule for us because again.
Not for you, but in general.
I mean, I guess you have different, you have different licenses that go with food. So you get an alcohol license if you sell more than whatever percentage of, of food to.
Right, like a gas bill pub.
Yeah, so you sell a glass for twenty bucks and I put a drink in it, and then all of a sudden my merchandise sales are higher. There's all sorts of things that people do. But with that said, and, and shady, but it is what it is. We are forty-six percent onsite beer sales. Everything else, like we do other beer, like to-go, like four packs and crawlers and all that. And then wine, again, is like what I said, seven percent is what, that does technically put us, if you take onsite consumption, it would put us over fifty percent.
So your alcohol sales is more than your food sales, and that's, okay. The other thing you talked about is the square footage. Now, you've come in and requested, correct me if I'm wrong, Bradford, the, the increase from the five thousand to six thousand. Why didn't you come in and request seventy-five hundred?
We did.
Okay. And then what happened with that?
So we originally were going to go to the Laurel Lay thing, and then everything happened with the, the landlord, like I discussed. And it was one of those things we were said, we were told, ask for what you need, not what you want. Basically saying, we can't just go in there and say, give us twenty thousand square feet, and we can grow into it later. The, the idea is that because of, we're, we're a very unique business of the community that I think, and I don't want to speak for anybody, and Bradford can speak, because we've had conversation. But my thought is, and, and it's probably, I'll just say it, it's probably a smart thing to do because, again, I could go out of control, right? You say, okay, give me twenty thousand square feet. Next thing you know, I'm putting silos in, I'm doing whatever. And the, and the, and the village was like, oh, boy, we didn't, this isn't what we wanted, and there's nothing to hold us in check. And I'm not opposed to being held in check. I just, like I said, one hundred and sixty-eight square feet is all I want.
Right. And then from staff's perspective.
The way I remember, they originally wanted eight thousand square feet, and that was to accommodate moving into Laurel Lay. We had conversations where it was, well, if you're, if you're only moving into the bay to the west, you know, and you think, and you may contemplate further expansions, then that's, you know, grow, grow into the number rather than like the hard line, five thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. So then I think where we, the, the two of us landed was at the six thousand mark because they weren't going to get more into the other bays.
And then since you brought up the timeframe and the dollar amount as far as application and when we started this process, why did it take so long and cost so much? Since they brought it up, I think it's fair to say, from staff's perspective.
There, there's, there's reasons behind that. There's, you know, the applicant, when they would submit, the documents weren't correct and accurate. There was, they just didn't jive, and so this, this is how long it took to get things correct and accurate.
I think what we did is we wore Bradford down because eventually he said.
We just did the application form.
Just do this, put it on there, which, which is, which is, again, we're, we're submitting, we're saying, how do we do this? How do we do whatever? And, and I'm not, whatever, we're small business. Yeah, he, he did. And, and like I say, at the end of the day, it's, it's one of those things where, again, so then we did it, and then it came to council and then say, let's do a variance. So that's another nine hundred dollar application fee that we paid. And then the, I just paid another nine hundred dollars for a, a attorney, something, another. I don't even know anymore. I just.
Legal advertisements.
Yeah, legal advertisements. I'm like, and I don't know how many other ones we've done. I just, again, it's, it's.
It's a process.
Yes, it is a process.
And my final question, which was. Um, and my final question, which was my only question up until the presentation, so thanks, is this applies to everybody who comes in wanting a brew pub in the Village Royal Palm Beach, correct? That they can adhere to the six thousand, the outdoor seating, the everything, is that?
Yeah, and that, and that is contingent upon the approval of a special exception by village council for brew pub six thousand square feet or less.
Okay, so is that one?
And then variance.
And a variance for outdoor seating.
Yeah. I, I understand that, but that's why, so on regular agenda item number four, the last line says, specifically requested for a property located at five forty-three North State Road Seven, Suite one oh three.
It, it is village-wide, but I believe that that was inserted for informational purposes of, this is the, the intended, intended location for these applications.
And, and it's their application, right?
Well, it's their application to change the rule.
Correct, so it's specific for that, but it goes, it does go over the whole, the whole village, that is correct.
Okay, so even though it says specifically for, it is village-wide?
That is correct.
Okay, and I, I'll said it, I said it last time, I'll say this time, my concern is, is because we've lumped together the square footage in the outdoor seating, I don't have a problem with the expansion, I think that's just where I'd rather that just be a special exception on a case-by-case event that you guys are doing as far as outdoor seating on a regular basis, just because then it brings, I think, a little bit more to the council to add more of, this brew pub wants to do this, this brew pub wants to do this, that, you know, as we get more in, so that's my only concern, but thank you for the-
And I, I could be wrong, and don't, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, fair enough.
No, it's, okay.
No, I don't.
I'm sorry.
So we're still telling them what to say and do?
No, we're not.
Wait, you know, the, you'd like to think these things should be simple. They were the first ones to come through to create the brew pub category within our zoning district that took that manufacturing out of the industrial, and, because it was legal, it was there, could have done it there, and into the commercial. And, and that's, that's why it was tough on us and tough on them, because it, and then it was a special exception, so, you know, and then it had some restrictions that text amendments that needed to be changed, so it was, it was hard to follow. And that was for us, it was harder for them to follow, because not only did they never do it before, but, you know, they, so even for us, it was, you know, there were several moving parts, and keeping those moving parts in the right order and all that was, was difficult. But we got there, we got there, and you got a great business, and it's, and it looks like people are using it, and they're going to use it more, and thank you for being patient.
Okay, any other question? You sure? Okay, have other amendments on council, any other questions? If there are no other questions or comments, I'll look for a motion.
Motion approved, regular agenda item number four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have, Diane, please let the record show, agenda item R four was approved for one. We'll move on to a regular agenda item R five, which is a public hearing to consider variance application number two, three, dash, one oh seven, and approval of variance order VC two, dash, two, three, dash, zero, four, an application by Royal Palm Brew, Brewing Company, requesting variance approval for section two, six, dash, seven, five, point, two, sub, B, six, of the village code to allow for a hundred and eighty-nine square foot outdoor seating area directly abutting in residential zoning district for a property located five, four, three, North State, uh, uh, North State Road Seven. This is a quasi judicial, did you already swear?
The applicants have been sworn, I just need ex parte disclosures from council on this item.
Village staff.
Thank you.
Okay, Bradford, you're on.
Great, thank you, Mayor, I want to just jump right in it. Um, the village code, section twenty-six, thirty-two, F six, allows village council of ground variances at code when special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege. Deliberate interpretation of the provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Um, the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land, will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of the division, and will not be injurious to the area involved, detrimental to the public welfare. Um, we have heard, I was going to go over, um, the applicant's justification, but I think that we've heard that, um, with the previous application. The village staff is not in support of the variance, because staff believes no special conditions or circumstances exist, which are not applicable to other lands, and will not confer to the applicant special privileges that are denied to other lands, and we are sticking to the strict criteria of our code whenever we're making this recommendation. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission on September eighteenth recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. The applicant choose to make any comments? You, the way it was presented by staff is acceptable to you? Okay, good. All right, with that, um, any public comments in advance for agenda item R five?
No, Mayor.
Any, uh, hands raised for agenda item R five, where?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comments on agenda item R five. If anyone wants to speak, now would be the time. If you, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R five, open for comments for members on council.
Just real quick for staff, um, the reason why the staff is recommending denial, is it because this was, this is, it was done prior to regular agenda item number four? Is that where we just went?
No, it is the strict, so when you read through the criteria, village staff, when we make recommendations, we can't make recommendations based on, you know, what the applicant contends that. Um, they have ran an outdoor seating area, there were no issues with Anthony Grove or Victoria Groves. Um, oh, Belitara, sorry.
They were seven.
So, um, we, we, it's based on the, the, that criteria, we don't have the latitude to consider other factors whenever we're making our recommendations, and that's why it's-
So if-
You'll, you'll find very seldom would we make a recommendation of approval on a variance.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with if regular agenda item number four was last month, there wouldn't have, okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments, member on council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, Diane, let the record show that agenda item R five was approved for one. Okay, and with that, we'll go to public, uh, agenda item R six, which is a public hearing to consider application number two, two, dash, six, four, an application by Royal Palm Brewing Company, an adoption of resolution number two, three, dash, two, two, confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking special exception use approval for a brew pub not to exceed six thousand square feet of gross floor area subject to section two, six, dash, seven, five, point, two, for a property located at five, four, three, North State Road Seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this request is a result of the applicant's desire to explain, expand the current brew pub. Currently, the brew pub occupies two thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine square feet within Suite one oh three. The applicant is proposing to expand into Suites one oh six and one oh seven for an additional two thousand, three hundred square feet, also included by a separate variance application. It's a proposed one hundred and eighty-nine square foot outdoor seating area. This will bring the brew pub to a total of five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight square feet. In reviewing this petition, staff considered conforming with the village's Palm, Village Royal Palm Beach Code of ordinances, specifically twenty-six, thirty-two, F four, which outlines the review criteria for special exception applications, and those are here on this screen. And I'll just go right through these. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this application on September eighteenth, and village staff is recommending approval of this application. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Does the applicant choose to make any comments? You're satisfied with the presentation done by staff, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, if I could ask for ex parte disclosures on this item as well? They're probably the same, but I just want to make sure, thank you.
Okay, okay, good. Diane, were there any prior comments from the public on agenda item R six?
No, Mayor.
Ray, we have any hands raised for agenda item R six?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R six, if anyone would like to, I've given the opportunity now to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R six, open for comments and questions for members on council. There are none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number six.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that agenda item R six was approved, approved five, zero, okay? Okay, moving forward to agenda item R seven, is a public hearing to consider application number two, three, dash, zero, five, four, an application by Fernando Osorio, I hope I pronounced that right, of Millstone Motors, an adoption of resolution number two, three, dash, three, six, confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking applicant, uh, a special exception use approval for a two thousand, two thousand, seventy-two square foot automotive and/or watercraft repair in or service within the Industrial General Zoning District for property located at five thirty Business Parkway, base two and base three, this is a quasi judicial process.
Thank you, gentlemen, can you state your names for the record?
Good evening, council. Fernando Osorio.
Jonathan Osorio.
Thank you, could you raise your right hand for me, and I'll swear you both in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you both, and I'll turn back to council for ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Okay, Bradford, you're on.
All right, and it's outlined in red. Um, staff reviewed this application and, and considered the criteria for approving special exceptions, and those are here on this slide. Let's go through these. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and staff is recommending approval of this application. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, does the applicant choose to make any comments?
No.
None?
Do you have any? Well-
You're satisfied with the presentation presented by staff?
Yes.
Okay, then with that, uh, Diane, do we have any public, advanced public comments on agenda item R seven?
No, Mayor.
Ray, we have any hands raised for agenda item R seven?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R seven, but if anyone would like to, I'd like to give them the opportunity now. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R seven, and take questions, comments from members on council. There are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion approved, regular agenda item number seven.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, let the record show, agenda item R seven was approved, five, zero, good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you guys so much, happy birthday, Mayor.
What do you, I didn't say it, he did.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, regular agenda item R eight, is a public hearing to consider application two, three, dash, zero, six, an application by Kingswood Academy, Royal Palm Beach, in adoption of resolution number two, three, dash, three, eight, confirming council action, the applicant is seeking a site plan modification architectural and aesthetic review approval for conversion of the vacant retail building into a child daycare centers with modifications to the building, paint color, landscaping additions, and signage for a property located at one, zero, two, four, five, Okeechobee Boulevard, within the Cobblestone Village Shopping Center. This is a quasi judicial, uh, process, so we need to have folks on it.
Yes, sir, thank you, your name for the record, sir?
Judgment, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, sir, could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and I'll turn back to council for ex parte disclosures.
Thank you. Okay.
Great, thank you, Mayor, um, as you stated, this is the, um, currently vacant CVS, um, building. The applicant is proposing to re, redevelop the existing building, formerly a one, eleven thousand, two hundred square foot CVS into a child daycare center that will serve two hundred and forty children, and have twenty-four staff members at maximum work shift. The proposed improvement include reconfiguring the drive-through, excess parking spaces, and circulation drive into a sixteen thousand square foot outdoor play area. The outdoor play area will be treated with artificial turf, include a tot lot, splash pad, little tyke, car track, jungle gym, shade camp, canopies, and wash stations. The current dumpster will be relocated from the northwest to the northeast, and will include a new enclosure as well as landscape treatments. In reviewing the application, village staff can consider conforming with chapter twenty-six of the village's Code of ordinances, specifically the proposed project meets the requirements for the general commercial zoning district, and section twenty-six, sixty-one, planned commercial developments as pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas, maximum building height, and overall proposed site plan improvements, and all the village's requirements for this type of use in the general commercial zoning district. This slide is an illustration of the landscape plan, the applicant is also requesting architectural approval for the landscape plan. There are some minor modifications to the current landscape plan to accommodate the proposed modifications of the site. But landscape plan meets village code. Here's a, um, elevation drawing, another elevation drawing. Again, this slide shows the architectural and proposed signage. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and recommended a vote, vote of, uh, five to zero. Um, staff is requesting that, uh, we, we are recommending approval, um, condition two C. Uh, the applicant had some, some issues with the language, uh, which stated that, um, that the all signs needed to meet all dimensional requirements of village code. We would like to change that to, all signage shall meet the village code requirements for signage, and remove the dimensional, um, word within that condition of approval, and I just wanted to state that for the record.
Okay, does that really make a difference?
It, well, the, the applicant, so, this, this was annexed from the county, and the sign does not meet the ten-foot setback, so they get all rights and obligations. So that dimension was creating some heartburn for the applicant.
I forgot that, that we, where that came from, yes, okay. Um, all right, does the applicant choose to make any comments? Please tell us about this new academy.
Again, judgment, agent for the applicant.
John, I haven't seen you in a long time, where you been?
It's been a while, um, we're actually working on your, uh, new recreation center, so, uh, that's coming along nicely. I think we're submitting C, sixty percent CD soon, but I think it's a great adaptive use, uh, this is their fourth location, uh, so they're well ingrained in there, they're not a first-time operator, so again, this will be a fourth, uh, their fourth location. I think two hundred and forty kids, you know, plenty, plenty, plenty of parking, uh, and plenty of green space, and I think it's a, a good use. Uh, we're in agreement with the conditions of approval, uh, with two C as amended, and, uh, hopefully, we can, you'll recommend us to move forward and look to, to submit building permits.
I'm curious, where are the other three locations?
Um, Palm, uh, Palm Springs and Green Acres, or, or, I think there's two in Palm Springs, if I remember.
And is there an age range here?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, from, uh, you know, toddlers up to, I think, uh, five or six years old, yeah. Uh, and in fact, our, uh, yeah, we had to, our, our playgrounds are separated by age as well, uh, out on the playground.
Diane, any prior comments from the public on agenda item R eight? Okay, Ray, any hands raised for agenda item R eight?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I have not received any public comment cards, but if anyone would like to, that would be the time. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R eight, and take comments from members on council.
I do have a quick question, Bradford, go back to that slide, yep, that one, can you hover over where the playground is, the splash pad, all of that?
Okay, um, so the playground is-
It's on the north side of the building, that's what I want to make sure.
It's basically everything-
And it wraps.
Everything west of the south facade.
Okay.
So that, the whole circulation there is being, uh, retrofitted, uh, to after turf, so everything south of the face, the facade is all turning green.
Because my concern is what's the south of the building, because then that is parallel with Okeechobee, I know there is that space, but I always, from a parental standpoint, I always look to say, where's the playground, and I don't want it right on a busy street. So I'm fine, I think it's great on the, the west side and on the, uh, north side, but that's my concern, if that square is recreational right there, I don't know if there's, I understand the plans are all in and everything, but I, I'm concerned about that location if that's an outdoor area, I know it's fenced in, I know it's everything, but, um, with the amount of traffic that goes through there, I've seen car accidents on that corner.
So, uh, if you look at that property line, it, so it's, it's, even though it's parallel, uh, there's another probably fifty, sixty feet before you get to, uh, the Okeechobee Boulevard there, that's in the kind of common area of the planned- the Okeechobee Boulevard there, uh, that's in the kind of common area of the planned development. Uh, it is fenced, uh, you know, I.
Yeah, I understand all that. I've also saw a car accident over there last week. It was in that canal, that ditch area by the canal. So that's, that's my concern is just that corner right there. I don't know if there's any way to relocate it to the north east corner in the back, what's over there. Cause I see if you have it all the way like a, I understand, it's kind of like a U shape or, or J shape.
Yes, I was just going to say it's a U shape. If I can, uh, uh, I don't know if you can, how I toggle my screen up here.
Are you need it?
Uh, I was just going to show you that where the, where the green space was on it. That was all.
John, you're required to have a certain amount of landscaped area or play, playground area.
Yes, we, yes, we are. We're, we're considerable, we're considerably over. So everything that, I don't know if you can quite see the graphic here. So it used to have circulation completely around the building. This is all going to green space now. Uh, this is the entire fenced area here. So yes, we have plenty of player here, here and here, but we'd like to utilize all the space for them.
And what is in that square right?
It's a, it's a, it's a cover. So it's a sun, a sun shade.
So it's shelter. Okay.
Yeah, it's a sun shade.
How tall is the fence?
Six feet.
Six feet.
What kind of fence is it?
Uh, picket.
Bob wire on the top?
No, no burp, no burp.
It's, it's the Pennsylvania escape pen. They don't have to borrow wires. Is that how they keep getting out? Uh, yeah. That's just my only concern and the ex.